Gentlemen, welcome to the Sierra Vista City Council Meeting for 10 March 2022. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Rick Mueller.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Rachel Gray.
Present.
Councilmember William Benning.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Angelica Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Rodriguez.
Mark, did you hear? Mark, did you hear? We have one remote council member tonight.
Councilmember Carolyn Humphrey.
I'm here.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum and we'll fix the technical difficulties.
We have a quorum and we'll get Mr. Rodriguez on the line. Tonight, we'll start our meeting as we always do with the invocation. Tonight led by Reverend Greg Adolf of the St. Andrews Catholic Church, and I will lead the pledge. Would you please rise as you're able?
Before we invoke the divine blessing, let's take just a moment of silence to pray for the people of the Ukraine and the people of Russia who are victims of failed leadership. Let us pray. Eternal all wise God, we ask your blessing upon this, our city council, and upon all of those who are joined with him in public service for the good of our community. We pray that you would give them a vision for our community and its possibilities that are beyond all human imagining. Give them a vision that will sustain them in the long and often tedious tasks of studying and planning for our future together. Give them a vision that will strengthen them to see that vision through to completion and not become discouraged. Give them a vision of what Sierra Vista can become so that they will always choose not simply what is good but what is best. Give them a vision of great possibilities which will include and empower all of our citizens. And give them a vision too large to be accomplished by merely human ways and means so that they will turn to you, our God, in their need. Bless them always with a mountaintop vision to disdain them as men and women and empower their service together, that they may always serve with joy, with generosity, and with gratitude. All this we ask with confidence, for we ask all in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you very much, Father. We appreciate all your efforts in the community. Item number one is acceptance of the agenda. Dr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the agenda for the regular city council meeting of March 10th, 2022 be approved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections, modifications to the agenda?
None.
Hearing none. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Have we got him yet? We still haven't got him? Okay. Those against? So it's 6-0. The agenda's been approved. We now move on to awards and presentations. We have one award tonight from the Government Finance Officers Association, distinguished budget presentation. I would ask Jennifer to come forward, please. Okay. We're very fortunate in the city of Sierra Vista. We have a number of great employees. Tonight, we recognize one of them with an award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This is a certificate in recognition for budget preparation to Jennifer Osborne. It doesn't have your new name. Budget Officer, City of Sierra Vista. And I just want to say congratulations. And this is what, the second? One for you or the first one? Your second, okay. So we're looking for very many more. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, the budget needs to obtain proficient ratings in all four of the overall categories. Not only did the city obtain the proficient ratings, but also outstanding ratings in several of the criteria. I want to thank the mayor and city council for your guidance and all your suggestions for the book, and also department heads and staff for all your extensive knowledge and also your support and everything. And here's to starting it all over again.
I just want to say one thing about our budget team. She's the one that pulls it all together. But we have key employees, year after year, that provide the input and make it really a team effort. So this is really a team award for the entire city staff, but you get to have your name on it because you're leading the charge. So thank you. I guess we're up to item two.
Vice City Manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. The City Manager's report first. Mr. Petucha.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. Your next regular work session is scheduled for March 22nd, 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And then, of course, your next regular meeting that follows on Thursday, the 24th, 5:00 p.m., also here in the council chambers. A few projects tonight. The construction manager at Risk Services for the Nancy Brua Animal Care Center Improvement and Expansion Project, as well as the design engineering services for that project, have been led and we're currently in negotiations on price, so we'll let you know how that turns out. But that design will be starting very soon. If you'll notice, there's work being done on the streets and the annual street maintenance project, patching and sand seals around town was awarded to K&amp;G for $710,000, which was below budget, so we're very happy about that. So be careful out there. There's going to be quite a bit of work being done around town. The Sears Center Park Parking Lot Project, which is a community development block grant project, was also awarded to K&amp;G for $479,000, which was a little over budget. That contract is pending, and we're expecting completion of that project around the middle of June. Then the bids for Avenue de Esquela Extension and Charleston Road Payment Replacement Work actually started Monday of this week, and we're also expecting completion around the middle of June for that one. Then the most important one here that we get asked about the most is the lighted airport entrance sign, and the footings were poured for that finally, and hopefully to be installed within the next two weeks then. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Petucha. Any questions for Mr. Petucha on his report?
Well, one other thing, Mr. Mayor. I almost forgot because the paper is hiding behind here. Your January sales tax report came in this week, and I'm pleased to report that that ran 9.6% over last year as well. So we've been consistently running nine and a half to 10% on our sales tax month over month, so good news.
Yeah, that is good news, but one of my concerns is that the fact that we've been garnering more revenue, we're also going to be impacted by inflation, just like everybody else.
Yes, we are.
So it's going to be interesting to see how that increase gets gobbled up by inflation as we go ahead in the next several months.
Yeah.
Not extra money to be spent, for sure. So we've got to be careful and watch our pennies, just like our citizens are doing with their pennies. Okay. Item number two, consent agenda. Ms. Humphrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the consent agenda consisting of the regular city council meeting minutes of February 24th, 2022, and Resolution 2022-007, Piazza San Lorenzo Mino subdivision plot, plat, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous, right?
An aye.
Okay, so we've got an aye from Mark.
I heard you.
Okay, good. All right, then we next go to the public hearing items. Item number three. This is a public hearing that does not require a motion to be made, but we're looking at community development block grants. So, Mr. McLaughlin, would you introduce the subject, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the time of year when we start narrowing down what projects and programs to include for block grant funding in the annual action plan for the upcoming program year. The formula allocations haven't been announced by HUD, so we're using a $260,000 estimate. At this stage in the process, we're just seeking preliminary input and feedback on which applications to include and at what amounts. Program services are capped at 15% or about $39,000 if the $260,000 estimate holds. As you're aware, the purpose of the program is to stabilize and improve target neighborhoods that are socioeconomically disadvantaged through public facility and infrastructure improvements and housing programs. We've also used CDBG programs to eliminate blight through demolition and site clearance activities. Program services must principally benefit low to moderate income individuals. We're moving into the fourth year of our five-year consolidated plan. The chart in your memo kind of outlines how the CDBG funding has been allocated in recent years. You'll recall that we try to take on one large capital project to reduce or minimize the administrative burden associated with federal spending requirements. This year, recommending further public investment in upgrading the upland portion of Soldier Creek Park to include landscaping and lighting, tall slide and other site amenities, to create a more inviting and visually appealing environment that will complement the streetscape improvements that are being designed for North Garden Avenue. We did receive two applications from outside agencies that are here to present to you this evening. We started the process with a notice of funding availability that was published in the Sierra Vista Herald, as well as sent out to our social service agencies on our email distribution list. On February 16th, we held a public meeting that was attended by Salvation Army, Southern Arizona Legal Aid, and Arizona at Work. They did not submit this year. So we'll factor any feedback and guidance that you're ready to proceed or provide this evening, along with any public hearing testimony, into our draft annual action plan that will be presented to you at your second meeting in April. We do have to finalize that plan by May and submit it to HUD for their consideration. Typically, around August is when we receive their approval of our application. And so with that, I recommend inviting the outside organizations up to present their applications for your consideration.
Before we do that, any questions for Mr. McLaughlin? During the work session, we got a pretty good, pretty good brief on this, and we've been through the cycle four times now, is what you said. So what I would last ask you to do is I'll ask the people requesting funds for CGGB to come up, and first up would be the Sierra Vista Dream Center, Ravi McCall.
Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to the council and the public. So my name is Cleo McCall. I'm the president, CEO of the Sierra Vista Dream Center. And as you see in the slide, our mission is to provide through activities, athletic fitness, and support programs that are set in a positive and fun environment. Bottom line, we mentor youth. And from those, and from our collaboration of entities, we work with Services School District, Buena High School, Carmichael, and you can see the entities that we work with here. History, we formulated this Dream Center in 2006. We started out of the library, and our five core competencies are to homework assistance, tutoring, mentoring, nutrition assistance, life skills, and food and clothing giveaway, which we do a lot of, and athletic and fitness training. This is what we do: restore hope, empower people, and build community. Now, I know this is a busy slide. Most of you can't see it. But what we do is we collaborate with a lot of entities to, from health and fitness, educational improvement, youth focus, the STEAM project. We have about, I'd say about 100 youth involved in the program, and we want to turn out leaders, as you can see, city council and mayor, and have can-do attitude and be continuous within the society. What is our goal? To promote and champion health, good STEAM projects, and teach of the importance of school and life skills. And what is the issue now? The issue is there's limited parking for seerfield activities and the seerfield attendees. More activities, there are more activities based upon increased usage, and it's beginning to be a high-traffic area in that location. And there's minimum lighting after dusk. And as just a little history, in 2015, SBDC applied for CPDD funding to install lighting on the east side of Carmichael, to our east. So what we propose is use part of our, use part of our land, propose parking for seerfield and to fund lighting poles, lighting poles to provide, to provide no risk to parking, no risk to the parking vehicles, collaborate with the city of Sierra Vista to have a shared parking lot, and have 24-hour security monitoring by Sierra Vista Dream Center, and to be able to service the community after dusk hours from food and clothing distribution, have a lighted area deterrent of the intruders, and likely detection of intrusion if attempted. Bottom line, we leave no child behind. Sir, that is my brief. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I hope you're available for questions, because I have some. Just like the rest of the council, if you've got questions first.
I do, but...
Who wants to go first? Rick, you got it.
Okay. Since you're going to permit seer park, parking on your property, city attorney, do we need a contract with the Dream Center to get that implemented?
Or a hold harmless agreement?
Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, I don't know that, well, there should be some type of agreement, whether it's a license agreement or a use agreement that allows the public to park there, and probably a reciprocal hold harmless agreement as well, yeah.
Okay.
But we'd have to look into that.
Right. That's the only question I had.
Anybody else? I got a couple of questions from, and I read the application with some great interest, and I want to let the public know that I appreciate what you do. I've been a guest out for some activities over the years.
Thank you, sir.
At your place, and you do a lot of good work. Last year, we basically used part of the funds, and it hasn't been built yet, to actually put in parking in another city-owned area. And in my mind, that would have been adequate parking for the city side of what you're proposing. Is, I'm going to ask our Parks Director, with the street parking, with the new parking lot, are we meeting adequate current-term needs for the Sears Center?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the short answer is during a tournament, no. 150 to 175 spots would be necessary.
So how often do we do a tournament? A big tournament, like you're saying? Once a year, twice a year?
It will be twice a year, for sure, with local folks, and that's just from the youth side, but I know that the adults are trying to bring people in as well.
Okay. One of the, one of the initial things that I looked in your application, and I also had questions about, there was a number of 500 people. You're looking for capacity, is that parking spaces? Or is that people that visit your facility on a regular basis?
That's people that visit the facility, yes, sir.
And then my next question is, based on that 500, how many actually visit either early morning where they would need lights in the parking lot or in the evening?
It's usually in the evening, sir.
But I mean, how many, how many, you're going to get 500 in an evening?
No, sir. That's 500 total.
What's your, what's your basic number for average event?
Probably 250, sir.
Okay, so it'd be less than half of that.
Yes, sir.
The other thing that I was concerned, when I went out and looked at the property, is on the west side of the property, there's no sidewalk at all.
Yes, sir.
And that's, and that's an issue, and there's also, it's probably, it probably wouldn't meet, I think it's a four-foot standard, Matt, for sidewalk width?
Our current standard is five feet.
So five feet. So there are places along that south end where your fences, we'd have to go under your fence to put a five-foot sidewalk, so we're talking additional street work to move the curb and narrow the road itself to be able to do that. So there's some, that's problematic at best.
Sir, I can move that fence.
I'm just, I'm just saying there's issues here that we need, we probably need to resolve.
Yes, sir.
And I also, I don't know how many lamps you're going to put in for $30,000. And do you have, do you have, do you have a written estimate somewhere that says that's what it is?
Not a written estimate, just estimate off Google, sir. About $5,000.
Okay, so, okay, it's a thumbnail, thumbnail.
Yes, sir.
Estimate, okay? That needs to be refined a little bit, too.
Roger.
And while it helps the community, I appreciate that. I'm not sure what the connection is with the lower income, what the lower-income family use is when you already have a fairly substantial parking lot around the buildings. And when I went out there last night, the security lights around the buildings, in my mind, well, I couldn't get in to see, because the gate was locked, obviously.
Yes, sir.
But it looked like you had adequate light in the upper parking lot, so I didn't see that as a, as a, as a valid request. But now that you're asking for an additional parking lot, that, that hits, it's more accurate because the one light that is on the, on the west side goes about 15 feet on either side of the bottom of the pole.
Roger.
And, and everything else is pretty dark.
Roger that, sir.
On that area. So I think, I think we probably got some, some work to do to figure out how this is going to work. And I'm not sure, quite frankly, I'll have to think about this, because I'm not sure whether this meets the criteria for this type of award, because to me, the major benefit is going to be to the city sports complex, and probably a lesser benefit, benefit to the folks that we should be focusing on, which are the folks that are in your program.
Okay, sir.
So I gotta, I gotta wrestle with that one, quite frankly.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would, I would argue that...
Mark, we'll get to you in a minute.
He'll get you.
Does Rodriguez want to go? Go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just had a few comments. I hope you can hear me.
Can you hear?
So, yeah, I, I frequent seer parks a lot in the evenings. My son plays soccer there. My stepson, one that practices football there sometimes, and that corner of the property is indeed very dark. And parking is definitely a premium in that area. And like Ms. Laura said, during a soccer tournament, people were parking all the way down towards the bypass. And speaking of the bypass, it kind of connects to the church area, the Dream Center area. There's a big wide walking path that people use at night, which is a very good healthy initiative for people to be doing at night. A lot of times, the parents will walk around the park while their kids are playing soccer and things like that. But it is dark on that one side, and that is also the one side that has a bathroom right now. So if there was lighting and additional parking, I think that'd be a definitely benefit to citizens of the city as well. to citizens of the, of the city as well.
Okay. Anything else, Mark?
That, that's it.
Okay, Greg.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would be in favor of this particular project, based on what the Dream Center focuses on. It focuses on youth, it focuses on youth that are in perhaps the lower strata of wealth, giving out food boxes. I mean, we, we struggled with this a year ago, when we were talking about the Salvation Army parking lot. And, you know, to me, this is very. It's very, very similar, very similar in scope to what the organization does, plus what they're asking for. And could you put up the, the?
The map?
The map, there, there you go. It's a big piece of property. I think it would enhance, as Mark mentioned, not only the neighborhood, but also the property, and help the city out at the same time. I think we've got some work to do with respect to hold harmless agreements and things of that nature, and maybe get some solid bids from maybe the Schneider Project, who knows? And then we can maybe move forward and get an approval on this. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for coming in and sharing.
You're welcome, ma'am.
So you can learn a little bit more about, about, about everything. So, so for the map, is, are there plans for, for making a parking lot already in the works? And then, and then for the overflow parking, is there plans for making a parking lot there as well?
So, so the plan is to make the proposed parking, that's, since that's a flood zone, we don't want to put a building there. So, we want to make that just parking. Now, the overflow parking, that's going to be our admin buildings that we're going to build, but right now, it's just going to be overflow dirt parking.
Yeah, okay. So, the, the plans are already going for the parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, okay.
You brought up another question. I'm sorry, sorry, Reverend.
No problem, sir.
But overflow, if it is in fact a flood zone, didn't we have the similar problem with the parking lot we proposed? We had to put it in the right place and organize it so that was, it was out of the flood zone, because we couldn't use federal money in the flood zone?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the issue there was the federal prohibition on using CBG funds in a flood way.
Okay.
We did have to go through an extra layer of permitting approvals for constructing the parking lot in the AE flood zone, okay? Additional steps there. I do not know the designation of this portion of the property.
I, I.
Go ahead.
I question that, because it's up, to me, it's up high enough where it should not be in a flood zone, but if it is, we have to go through extra steps, and that was my, that was my point, and that's time and money both.
And I originally understood this to be for your main parking lot, and I did double-check, and that was outside the flood plain, so I would have to revisit the flood mapping, just to see the status there.
Yes, sir.
And clearly, you got drainage between the two of them, that's obvious, yeah.
Yes, sir, we do.
Mr. Mayor, you have?
Chuck.
Chuck.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I see some potential here in this project, but, you know, the lights may be, you know, you know, the horse before the cart here, you know, there's, there's some sidewalk that would need to be, you know, put in, you know, that obviously, we would, you know, want to have the parking lot, you know, asphalt, you know, and that, that's not going to be a cheap thing to do, and probably hard to do on private property with CBG. But, but I do see the potential for, you know, some sort of a partnership arrangement, you know, over time with the Dream Center to, to make the improvements down there. So, I, I think that's something maybe we could discuss, you know, how we would put a project like this together.
And I'm going to suggest that while your, while your proposal is, is probably a good one.
Yes, sir.
We may need to wait a year or two to make sure, a year at least, to sit down and make sure that we can do it the right way, and we're, and we're doing, we're putting the asphalt on the sidewalks and the, and the lighting in at the same time, or relatively the same time, because obviously, you don't want a dirt lot with nice, nice poles sitting out there. And no, and no access for pedestrians or.
True, sir. And I'm retired, so I have all the time.
Well, that's what I thought when I retired, too. So, what I'm going to suggest is maybe this is, this is something, in the short term, we need to get with, with the church and figure out if, if it's a go this year, or whether we're going to want to wait and do it another year. I don't, I don't know what your, what your timeline is, but.
I'm retired again.
Well, again, I know, but I mean, there's more than just you, I know. And there's going to be tasks that you, your, your group has to perform, and there's going to be tasks that the city has to perform to make sure we get a quality product for the folks.
Understood, sir.
So, any other comments?
Well, I, I just see some, some potential.
Oh, there's potential, no doubt.
And I, I just think we need to set up a meeting with.
Yes, sir.
With you. Your group, and maybe we can get together with our, with our folks, and let's, let's dream bigger.
Yes, sir. There'll be an email in your box.
The sooner we can do that, the better, because obviously, we make a decision when on this, Mark, or.
Well, the draft will come back to you in April.
Okay, so that's. That's really not all the time, when you're talking about talking to contractors and getting prices and all that kind of stuff, so.
Got work to do.
May I offer another?
Okay.
So, maybe if there's room within the right-of-way, if the concern is safety, and, and, I mean, perhaps instead of installing them on private property, there would be adequate space within the Taylor Drive and Nelson Street right-of-way.
We're probably talking two feet.
Facility improvement.
Two feet.
I don't see the, where the property and the right-of-way line.
Yeah, but I, I went out, I went out, I didn't pace it off, but it's about, it's about three feet from the fence to the back of the curb. So, we're talking.
We're assuming the fence is on the property line.
Yeah, we're setting the fence on the property line, yeah. So.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the Reverend?
No, Chuck answered. He had to ask and answer my questions, I think.
And I was going to ask about the budget, since it seemed vague, but since they're going to work on this, maybe we'll see a different one, okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your, your efforts in the community. Next up, we've got. I get the right project here.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm Dr. Anthony Reed. I'm the Executive Director of the United Way of Sierra Vista and Cochise County. It's always a pleasure working with the city, and with this new round of CBG funds, I came up with a, we come, we came up with a plan of action of how we're going to distribute those funds. First of all, on behalf of the board, but also on behalf of the community, I want to thank you for everything that we did with the CBG funds that we had before, the last round that we had, because that was really helpful for a whole lot of people in the community. So, the total that, the total that we were given was $39,000. And with that, then we figured that we could help with food assistance, summer reading program for education, hotel vouchers for the homeless, employment assistance, and administrative costs, which totaled 39,000. So, to break it down, the food assistance in collaboration with St. Vincent de Paul, Sierra Vista Dream Center, Peaches Pantry, local organizations, and Individuals for Food Baskets, this will allow us to distribute food baskets and also to stock pantries to help people in need, mainly for the people in need in the community. We've done it before, and it's always a, a big turnout of people in need, and if I can piggyback on it, we've distributed a lot of times near that parking lot that you guys were talking about in the last round. For the education portion of it, what we do, what we found years ago, between first and second grade, that's like the biggest, that's one of the most important grades in between for reading, as far as reading retention. So, we have a program called the Bucks for Books and the Summer Reading Program, where we were giving, we were giving all the first graders books. We buy them eight books that's picked out by the teachers, because the teachers know the individual reading levels of each kid. So, we give them books, we give them a cool backpack, we give them a letter, and we, we get the letter in Spanish and in English, so everybody understands what we're doing to help promote people retain, to, to help the kids retain their reading scores. So, with these funds, what we can do is, we can, we can enhance even more and go, instead of just first graders, we could, we would be able to, just in the local area in Carmichael, which has one of the, one of the, the largest people that's, that gets free lunch and everything else, we can go first through fifth grade. And what that's going to do is, especially for, which you have to understand, putting my education hat on, a lot of people, because of COVID and because of the remote learning and everything else, a lot of the students are behind or playing catch-up. And this will allow us to reach a whole lot more people, a whole lot more students in that area. For the hotel vouchers, in partnership with the Good Neighbor Alliance, a lot of times Good Neighbor Alliance, they, you know, when they're at capacity, then they try to send people to hotels. And with these vouchers that we'll provide, then they'll have a steady stream, so when they get people coming in that need assistance and need help with the hotels, then we'll be able to work with them more, so we can help more people and keep more people off the streets as much as possible. And for the employment assistance, piggybacking on what we did before, then we can help, we'll be able to help people with resume writing, we'll conduct job fairs with local employers, and have them come out and interview people and help them fill out things, talk about Dress for Success, salary negotiation, if possible, and job training. We'll also work with the Cochise Housing Network, who has this new program where they're helping the homeless, they, they just had a recent event, a couple, well, was that this week? I don't know, I don't remember exactly. But I talked to the director, and we're willing to work with them, and maybe on the days that they have that, then we'll have counselors ready to help people with fill out complete job resumes, or at least start putting them together and building things like that, and maybe even invite some of the employers out there, too, to, to help people, get people back on their feet. And then we have administrative costs, and of course, we'll do the, you know, we'll do whatever the city needs us to do, as we've done in the past, as far as the administrative part of things. I don't want to take up a lot of people's time, so if we have any questions.
First of all, Tony, let me, let me say thanks for, for being here tonight and making an application. People should know that the local United Way worked very well with the city during the pandemic, to do these types of services. So, you've got a proven track record, which I think is important.
Thank you, sir.
The only cautionary thing is, I would say, every, you come every year and ask for the money, but it doesn't automatically guarantee that you're going to get the money. However, based on the track record, I think the odds are pretty good.
Yes, sir.
You, you mentioned the Carmichael School, and I'm glad to see that, because when you look at the way the schools are rated in reading and math, et cetera, Carmichael seems to be the one that lags across the community. So, any help you can give to those, those kids, to give them a leg up, I think is a great thing.
Yes, sir.
And I read with interest, I think you've got a lot of good programs, you've got a proven track record, and I'm looking, I'm looking forward to your future adventures together with the city. Anybody else?
I have some questions. Let me try to find them. Let me get to them. First of all, while I'm looking for them, let me do say thank you for your assistance during the pandemic and everything that United Way did. I know I talked to quite a few people, and it was a very beneficial program, so thank you for that. I'm trying to find my notes, but I'm so sorry, because they're just not here right now. I know that one of my questions had to do, they, just found them. The agencies that you mentioned partnering with St. Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army, Good Neighbor Alliance, do you already partner with those on a regular basis?
Most of them are partner agencies with the United Way anyway.
Running those programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then on the employment section for the 7900, for the Job for Opportunity and stuff like that, do you partner with Arizona at Work currently, or?
I'm familiar with Arizona at Work in my other capacity, and, I mean, we, we'll be looking for other people as well to partner with as well, but I know the people who work there.
Okay.
And I work well with them, I do things with them in wearing my other hat.
Okay. My concern, and I'll say just what my concern always is when I see these things, is they're all great, great things that we should be helping within the community. I always worry about duplication of efforts. That's always, you know, there's only so much of a pie, and we can't split it too many ways, so there's nothing left. So, that's just always my concern, so I would encourage United Way to kind of reach out to the ones that like Arizona at Work and talk with them about how a partnership could work to expand the resources, should we decide to offer the money to the United Way.
That's too easy to do that.
Okay, Greg.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I can't talk about CBDD funds this time, because of my relationship with United Way, I just want to say I appreciate all the organizations that come up there and take advantage of it, and I like that it's getting out more and more, and the St. Vincent de Paul last year, and Good Neighbor Alliance, and then seeing the work going together, I just appreciate y'all coming out, but I just wanted to say thank you, because that's about all I can say, and I'll give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks for, for being here and sharing with us. I really love the fact that it, that all the different programs that you have and partner with so many people, and that it touches so many lives and has, has a ripple effect. And I do love the education assistance, and I think reading is super important, especially for, for children and at a young age. I remember when I started reading when I was young, and that had such an impact in my life and still does. So, I love the fact that you guys are wanting to kind of expand that to, to more ages of children, and I always love when anybody helps with the Good Neighbor Alliance. I think they definitely need, need help, and any kind of support that can be given to them is great, so, so thanks for all that you guys do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say as well, I really appreciate who they partner with, Carmichael School. I have a special love for Carmichael School. My fiance teaches there, so I get to hear all the good news stories and things like that come to fruition on the back end, for people that take extra time to stay after school, before school, obviously, they're not getting paid to do any of that, but it's for the greater good of our community, our West End people, you know, our neighborhood over there, so I really appreciate that, and it's good to see that money last year go to good use. Is there any hotels in our city that refuse to, to take the vouchers? Do we ever have that problem?
Not to my knowledge. The Good Neighbor Alliance, Brad Rowland, he has a good relationship with most of the hotels in the, in the city. And in fact, a lot of times, they cut us breaks and give us deals on things, a lot of times, knowing the, the efforts that we're doing in the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, one of, one of my questions was about, I can't find how much we were going to rec, in the past, we awarded 15,000 for the project, or for the?
Last, do you remember what you got last year?
Well, not, not them, the CBGB.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Humphrey, the max we can award is 15% of the overall allocation. Historically, it has been in the 15,000 range, particularly when we have multiple requests.
What's it this year?
This year, the cap is 39,000, if the 269,000, 260,000 estimate holds, which is 15%.
Thank you, that was my question, because this was 39,000. Okay, and then also, thank you for everything you've been doing for our community, and I was wondering, just because I noticed you are still looking to help the students, and you did mention having them play catch-up. The governor's office launched that arizonaontrack.com, and they're opening it up to the school districts and community partners to set up programs that will help the kids get up to speed for next year, so maybe that's another avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
You can look into, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate what you're doing for our community. All right, Matt, are you going to wrap this up? Is there word, next steps?
The next steps is, again, if the council can provide staff with some preliminary guidance in terms of, you heard a proposal from United Way, for ex, if there are services within their proposal that you, if there's a consensus around funding, it doesn't have to be entire scope, if, if you're not comfortable with the full, you know, 15% allocation, that could be One Direction, Dream Center lighting, it sounds like there's a little bit more legwork that needs to be done in terms of arriving at a consensus on that, that request. If, if you need more time, that's okay, too. We can revisit this at your first meeting in April. We can revisit this, uh, at your first meeting in April. Uh, I do see a familiar face from St. Vincent de Paul and I, I just want to let you know that I did reach out to HUD again today just to poke them. And, uh, they were going to reach out to San Francisco to, again, try to accelerate the approval of that and, uh, varmall review so we can get going with that parking lot improvement. I know you're probably wondering, why you haven't?
I'm very patient.
I appreciate your patience.
This is not an easy task.
Yeah, and our engineers assure us that it's not a big, you know, endeavor. And, uh, we should be able to get that done in short order, so.
Matt, the mayor pro temp's got some questions.
Hi, Matt. I'm over here. I see that the city has proposed two possible projects. One is the Soldier Creek at 225 and the other is the Judd Street improvements at 235. So obviously if we allocated 30 or 39, we're falling short from the money that the city's allocating. So I'm wondering how we reconcile that? Is that something council decides or?
Well, the question, the question is, what is, what is the staff proposal, Chuck?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Gray, I talked to Matt a little bit earlier this afternoon regarding, you know, which project, uh, both projects are good projects. We feel, uh, that the Judd project may be eligible for some other transit or transportation funds similar to what we did this fiscal year. So, so we have the possibility of getting other grant funding for that. So, so we would be recommending the Soldier Creek, uh, project as well. And, and along those lines, uh, while I have the floor here, uh, I think there's a potential of using funds similar to that to get started on the Dream Center corner, uh, as well. And in terms of, you know, sidewalk improvements, maybe some lighting in there right away while we work out the other components of the project. So, so I think there's ways to get started, uh, on that outside of the realm of CDBG.
So we get, we get back to the, the question.
So I think we can get, I think we can accomplish all these things, uh, just not necessarily within the realm of CDBG. So the, so the Soldier Creek Park projects would be the ones we would be recommending as a result.
And that's a $4,000 shortfall then, which is better than the 24,000 on the other project, so.
If we need to make the cuts we need to make, then that's what we'll do, Mayor Pro Tem Gray.
Well, what I, what I like, what I'd like to see is the next time we do, we, next time we have our work session, we go through this in a little more depth. And then, uh, we got to tell when to make a decision, Matt.
Well, the, the final step is in May. That's when we're presenting, uh, the, the draft that's going to get submitted to HUD, which is essentially our grant application. We could have two meetings in between, that final draft.
What I'm suggesting is we have a work session, come up with the proposed, uh, recommendation to the council. And then at the next, the next council meeting, it's an agenda item for approval.
Well, these i- ideas are just hitting me while we're, while we're sitting here. So I, I think I'll be prepared at your next work session to discuss, uh, the various options that I, that I think we have, so.
All right.
I'm good with that.
Any, any other further discussion? Okay. Uh, Mark, any further, anything further? Don't hear anything, so. Some silence is consent. And thank you for the presentations and thank you for your patience tonight while we, we kind of muddled through this. Okay, next is item number four. Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved the resolution 2022-008 amendments to the West Sierra Vista redevelopment plan be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. McLaughlin, maybe we have a staff report, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the last step of the approval process to put into effect the revised redevelopment area boundary that was approved last November. This action will fulfill your council's strategic plan objective on expanding the district and the eligibility area for the West Sierra Vista partnership program as appropriate. Uh, the format and content of the plan are crafted to fulfill statutory requirements for implementing a redevelopment area designation. It essentially adds a little bit more detail on previously established goals and objectives with respect to West End revitalization initiatives. The maps and data have been adjusted to reflect the new boundary, uh, which takes in all the non-residentially zoned properties, uh, West Fifth Street. Based on the feedback we received at the work session, uh, we removed the concept plans for the Fab Fry property, uh, which will come back to you as a standalone item at a future work session to decide the future direction of that site. Uh, we left in the proposed improvements to the Fab Avenue right away and drainage improvements, uh, which we intend to request in the upcoming fiscal year budget. Uh, the proposed amendments come to you with a positive recommendation from the West End Commission as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, who found the amendments to be consistent with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the city's general plan, uh, Vista 2030. Uh, if approved this evening, we'll begin accepting partnership program application, uh, requests for properties in the expansion area, uh, which will be eligible for approval after the 30-day effective date of the resolution lapses. As noted in the plan, uh, the proposed expenditures are subject to the city council's approval as part of the annual budgeting process. Uh, the amendments recommend increasing the partnership program budget from $50,000 to $100,000 annually to incentivize the reuse, redevelopment and upgrading of vacant and underutilized properties consistent with the city's community and economic development strategies. Uh, the plan also recommends establishing a $15,000 annual budget for increasing public art and public spaces to add vibrancy and visual interest to our downtown and create a stronger sense of place. Uh, the plan recognizes future phases of extending improvements along North Garden Avenue and West Fry Boulevard, consistent with city plans. Uh, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Hopefully the public has been able to find the amendments online. They've been po, they're posted on our website. Again, uh, not a huge departure from previously sta, established strategies. We're just, uh, broadening it out to, uh, recognize and address, uh, the expansion area that was approved last November.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Before we go on, uh, we have one member from the public that would like to address us on this issue. Mr. Kraps, would you come forward, please?
Give you a minute.
Okay.
This is the hardest.
You know, I know. He's recently had some, uh, some work done. So, uh, we'll give him the time he needs to get to the podium.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, friends, neighbors here and, and on TV. My name is Joe Kraps. I reside at 1780 Sunview Way, sat up here from 91 to 95 and, um, P and Z for many, many years. Uh, my comments are specific to the Fab Avenue parcel. Gosh, when we started this, I'm going to say five, six years ago, Matt, maybe a little longer?
Easy. It was acquired in October of 2020.
No, I mean, the, the entire West End talk from, from scoping meetings.
1996.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
Yeah.
Lot of things have changed. Uh, last year, towards the end of last year, I don't remember exactly when, but I'll say in about fourth quarter, General Motors made a statement that in 2035, 50% of the vehicles manufactured in the United States would be EVs, electric vehicles, 50%. Yesterday, Ford came out and had a similar, uh, announcement, although they did not give a percentage, but they talked specifically about, uh, electric vehicles. The production of the new, uh, electric Mustang, the F-150, all kinds of vehicles that, that, that fit in, in the Ford, uh, Corral, I guess. Because most of their things are animals and horses, I guess. But what we were lacking in Sierra Vista is EV charging stations. Right now, to the best of my count, there's five and then I just, I think I found a new one today. Uh, and some of those are actually on the West End. But what I'm proposing as, as, as we move forward, 2035 is 13 years from now. And they're talking about electric vehicles, electric trucks, autonomous self, uh, crazy things. But what we're overlooking is charging stations. I look at this new Circle K on South Highway 92. It must be eight or 10 gas pumps in the front, in the back, something we've never seen from a Circle K. They have a, an RV and, and commercial truck, uh, fueling station for diesel fuel. I'm just hoping that in the multi-million dollars that they've spent, that they've at least put an electric charging station in for EV vehicles. I don't know that for a fact. I haven't had a chance to look at that. But I'm, I'm offering to you a proposal that for any public parking that's around, in or on the Fab Avenue parcel, that three spaces be allocated for EV charging stations. Two for Universal and then you have to say one for Tesla. Because Tesla can use a Universal, but the Universal can't use Tesla. That's the way it works. We need to be in the forefront. And here is the perfect opportunity and the perfect place to do this. EV charging stations, public parking, public charging stations. Some of the ones that we have now are at hotels. They're proprietary to hotel customers only. Others are available to the public. But with only five in Sierra Vista, that's, that's never going to get close to, to the need that's going to come in the near future. We need to position ourselves now and start at this location. What a perfect opportunity. I just heard also about funding for Soldier Creek Park. There's another possibility. Oops, if that doesn't work, right across the street, we have a museum site in the future. There could be more, uh, EV charging stations. Perfect for the West End. I don't know what kind of public parking will be from North Avenue to Seventh Street. If there'll be parking lots per se, other than, you know, on-street parking, which is, would not be the right place for the charging stations. But this is the perfect opportunity to move forward. Excuse me, I have to read my notes because I can't remember everything. I was, I had so many things to talk about. But you know, one of the things I got to remember about Ford yesterday, and I thought was tremendous. One of the things that they're going to offer, when you buy a new, when you go in and buy a new electric vehicle, you will be able to take home in an additional fee, a charging port that you can have an electrician install in your house. They're going to make that available. So they're already thinking outside the box. They're already thinking about the future because the key here is being able to charge the vehicle. I mean, if we want to invite friends from Tucson and Phoenix to come visit us, what better thing to say than you can charge your car here? It's economic development, it's tourism, it's anything you want it to call it, but it's a step in the right direction for the future. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you, Joe, because you're, you're reinforcing a point I made to the city manager about a month ago. And that is that one of the ideal places in my mind is on the south end of the property you just mentioned. We have a, uh, we have a whole row where we could put certainly more than three or four charging stations. The challenges we have is, is it going to be city-owned or are we going to get a commercial operator? We've also talked about parks. For example, we have the big events in the parks. Uh, if you're going to be there a couple hours, you might as well, might as well plug in. And so we're investigating that and we're talking to our, who's the contractor?
Schneider Electric.
Schneider Electric as well, trying to get an overall city plan, uh, to, to install those because it's quite sort of a future.
Public, uh, pub, public per, private partnership for electric?
Well, that, we got, we're exploring, we're trying to explore that. Are we going to own and operate them as the city or can we work, can we work with the contractor to do that? Uh, all those things have got to be, got to be explored, but we're, we're aware of the challenge.
There's a third part to that.
Okay.
Partnership though, and that's Sulfur Springs, our electric provider.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we're, we're well aware that they're interested too.
Because there's something called the Electric Highway. I don't know if you've heard of that or not. It goes from Tucson to Benson to Wilcox to Bisbee. And what's missing is Sierra Vista. We need to be a part of that. I think that's a Arizona Department of Tourism, uh, thing and so that would be something to, to, to grab on to.
Well, obviously when we have the adequate number of charging stations, we'll, we'll fit right in with that, with that program.
Bisbee has one.
Yeah, I got you. I got you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Joe.
Just one thing I'd like to say in closing, go Cats. They won today 84 to 80 over, uh, Stanford.
Good deal. All righty. See where are we here? Now, Matt, uh, I guess we have questions for Mr. McLaughlin. This is his next. Any discussion?
I have a question for Matt.
Okay.
Matt, on your proposing on the, um, amount going forward to go from 5100 for the redevelopment, do we have, um, people that are already coming for it? I guess what I'm asking is, are we seeing that our need is greater than what we're proposing currently? And we need to expand or is it just simply because we're expanding the boundary and we anticipate it?
I think it's a combination of both, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Gray. You know, the economy is improving. Hopefully it continues. Certainly the size of the, um, the expansion area is going to create more opportunity, um, for eligibility. And we are seeing interest.
Good.
If we don't spend the money, it goes back to the general fund, so, uh, I'm confident.
Does it roll over into that same?
It goes back to the general fund, but I'm confident we will, uh,
I'm confident.
Yeah, through marketing and outreach and knocking on doors, uh, generate the interest to, uh, get people to participate and improve properties.
Okay, and I have a follow-up. So, uh, within the expanded boundaries, I'm assuming you've been talking to businesses that are already very interested in some of the items in this program as well?
That's correct.
Good, thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Matt, I'm going to go back to the almost same question, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Gray had with the money. Uh, year to date, have we ever had someone or leftover monies in that 50,000?
Since 2017, we've had to carry over for projects that weren't completed by the end of the fiscal. And it's not carry over. It, it's budgeting, recognizing, yeah, the, um, the approved amount that wasn't, we, we reimburse at the end of a project. So, I'll give you a real live example, Tombstone Brewery. Uh, they have an approved grant for the construction. It's kind of a question mark whether they're going to be done by June 30th. I reached out to their CFO. They're really going to try. But our inspectors and I kind of think it's unlikely. So that's a project that's likely going to have to be carried over. And so our budget request will reflect that.
Okay, and then have we ever had someone get denied or not get funding because we had too many people asking for it? Do we have to pick or choose or do we, if that makes sense?
Not yet.
Okay, and then finally, have we had someone apply one year, used funds and then apply again? Are they, is that in there that they can do that or not do that?
Yes, you, uh, you're eligible for funding consideration, uh, one application per fiscal year. But typically they're different projects. You might do one landscaping, one pro. Not all property owners and tenants can afford to do everything at once.
Roger.
So you may see an application for exterior paint or signage and then maybe landscaping the next year or, um, you know, ADA improvements and that.
And is that capped as how much funds that one business can get or can receive from the city?
Yes, uh, so there are caps within, uh, the grant categories that are eligible for consideration. And then there's an overall cap. So you can stack the requests, uh, you, through multiple categories, but it's ultimately, um, 15, or $15,000 per property. Uh, high priority revitalization sites are eligible for more with the city manager's approval.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I am in favor of doubling the current grant amount, um, in the year because I remember we had that public meeting in this room and it was, there was a great turnout. There were a lot of business owners that weren't in the, you know, they, uh, they didn't fit in the current, uh, the previous phase, yeah. And, um, they wanted that money like yesterday. So I think, I think I can see this all getting used up, the 100,000.
Anything else? Mark, anything from you?
Um, I only had one, uh, comment on the Fab Avenue property.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the people that did make comments online. Um, I know that Matt compiled them and had a good breakdown for us on Tuesday. I think it goes along with the other survey we did before. I'm not sure what the results were, but we asked the public, how did they want their information put out? How do they prefer it? Um, so things like this. So things like this, you know, when people leave public comments, just want to make sure that we have, you know, all the avenues covered, so people can put in their comments during the period that we have open. So a year from now, people aren't, are wondering what's going on on Fab Avenue, when we talked about it over a year ago. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other, any other, any other comments? Seeing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the motion, motion carries seven oh. And thanks, Matt, for all the, all the hard work, and thanks, thank you to your crew as well for all that they do. We now move to new business. Item number five, Mr. Bennie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the Resolution two zero two-two dash zero zero nine, Conditional Use Permit Amendment to Resolution four five zero one. A hundred and thirty-foot communications tower, thirteen hundred, Fort Avenue, be approved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Mr. Preckler, maybe we have the report, please.
Yes, you can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Since both of these requests are very similar in nature, I will be combining my staff reports for items five and six. However, both will have to be heard separately. So the conditional use permits before you this evening, I'm making my glasses on, are being requested by SBA Structures, and is to revise the existing communication tower elevations from a stealth monopole to a monopine. The request applies to two separate tower locations, one at thirteen hundred Fort Avenue, as you can see on the map here, is, is west of Sierra Center Park. And the other location is at ten forty-five South Lenzner Avenue. Again, you can see this is, this west of Joyce Clark Middle School. Now, there will be no additional changes to the height of these towers, which is one hundred and thirty feet tall, or an expansion of the grand lease area, which are currently screened by eight-foot masonry walls. The applicant has indicated that the design changes are necessary to provide capacity for carriers on the towers, and to allow them to maintain their equipment to current technological standards. So in other words, the 5G technology requires external antennas for complete functionality, and the monopines can therefore minimize the visual impacts of these antennas. Now, staff worked with the applicant to ensure that proposed monopines provided a realistic design while meeting the screening and stealth requirements of the Development Code. So as a result of these discussions, the applicant integrated the following standards into the design specs, which are shown in Exhibit A. So first, the first of these six is that the length of the branches shall be in proportion to the height of the monopole, as determined by the city. Secondly, the density of the branches shall be a minimum of three branches per foot. And to give you an idea what the density looks like at three branches per foot, it would be this photo. Oops, went too fast here. This photo right here identifies a tree at three branches per foot. There we go. Number four, I'm sorry, number three, branches shall extend beyond all antennas by at least twelve inches. Number four, branches shall begin a minimum of fifteen feet from the ground. Number five, the top of the faux tree shall be a minimum of five feet above the highest antenna. And six, brown paint or bark cladding acceptable to the city shall be used to conceal the vertical sections of the structure. Now, these items were heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March first. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the two requests. The commission meetings were public hearings, and as such, all standard public hearing notification requirements were met. The city did not receive any comments from the public. There were also no public attendees or comments from the required virtual neighborhood meeting that was scheduled on February twenty-second. The Forward Chuka and Quirion Board also reviewed these two requests and had no additional comments. This does conclude staff's report. Mr. Mayor, I do want to introduce Alexander Novak, who is with SBA Structures, who's in the audience tonight.
Mr. Novak, did you want to address us?
I'll just give you a brief overview, if I may. First of all, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for, for hearing us tonight. I got a text while I was in the audience that my twelve-year-old son in Dallas is watching online, so Jake, do your work. Wants to see what Dad does, I guess. As, as, I just wanted to commend staff a little bit. We've worked through the process with them. They've been tremendous to work with. I couldn't have asked for, you know, a better partner in the City of Sierra Vista staff. As I, as Jeff mentioned, I've worked with SBA in the areas of zoning and permitting. They've been a client of mine for sixteen years. I've been in the wireless industry and in site development for twenty-two years, and so I've seen the iterations go from 2G to 3G to 4G to 5G now. And really, the flagpoles that are existing here that we're replacing, you know, you kind of saw the proliferation of those at the end of 2G into 3G, and not so much in 4G. Those are going to be non-existent in 5G. If you've looked at the plans at all, you'll see that T-Mobile's using two different-sized antennas, one of which is eight feet tall. And these are really, they're called MIMO antennas, multi-in, multi-out, very high-capacity antenna. It's really going to be the backbone of 5G. These types of antennas were a nice-to-have in 4G, it's a must-have in 5G. And on one of these towers, you see a new carrier, Dish Wireless. They are building the first truly standalone 5G network in the country. That was a result of the T-Mobile and Sprint merger. Dish Wireless came in to be another carrier due to increased competition. So seeing that they have targeted Sierra Vista for one of their sites, that's, that's great news for you guys. And to piggyback off of the gentleman's comments on the electric charging stations, you know, it's always good to see municipalities kind of be forward-thinking. So that's, I'm here to invite any questions you may have, but other than that, that kind of concludes what I wanted to, to talk about.
Any, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here. So I'm going to ask you really hard questions, so you can impress your twelve-year-old son.
Excellent.
At the P&amp;Z meeting, you talked a little bit about kind of the timeline of 5G and what that'll look like going in the future. And I believe you had mentioned that as 5G kind of comes into play, we'll actually need less of these towers. So can you just talk up, repeat what you said at the P&amp;Z meeting?
Absolutely. So the, the types of towers that we're dealing with here tonight are what are called macro sites. Okay, those sites are designed to provide coverage over a wide area. When you see small cell sites go on light poles, things of that nature, those are what are called capacity sites. Does that, so those sites are closer together, lower to the ground, where people live, work, and play, right? So you're always going to need the backbone of coverage. Now, capacity, you're, we're seeing a shift in development. When I started, it was three-hundred-and-twenty-foot guide towers just blasting over twelve miles. Now, we've seen definitely a shift in the development, in the budgets of carriers, flip-flopped from all macro sites and a little small cell sites, to, you know, mostly small cell sites and much fewer macro sites. So there will still be a need for these, but you won't see as many large tower applications as we have in the past. No way.
Can I follow up for that? Actually, two follow-ups. But the first one is, as we need less of those, the ones that are in existence, will they go away?
No.
So they'll still remain, there just won't be new ones added?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I think you had mentioned a timeline of quite a few years, because that's a question we get asked a lot on, when is 5G coming? When is it going to be here?
Yeah, it's, it's here. You know, we're actively working on it, but as consumers, when are we going to see the full impact of 5G? It's going to be a while. Because it's a new technology. Not everyone is, you know, they're, everyone's not an early adopter of, of, you know, the handsets or equipment in your house or whatever. So this is truly the dawn of it. We haven't, you know, the gentleman mentioned autonomous cars. There's 5G right there. So while these networks continue to be built out, more of those things become a reality.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Sir, thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
Say hello to your son, Forrest.
Will do.
You need to bring him out here in the sunburner, so he can join the great areas of Sierra Vista.
Would love to.
Come see Arizona. New towers. Okay, Mr. Preckler, did you have anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Preckler. Further discussion from the council?
We'll need, we'll need enough, an additional motion for the second one.
I got it. Okay. I appreciate you being a part of the charity and keeping me on point. Anybody else, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might have wanted to ask him, but are there any safety considerations we have to think about with a, with a big radar or antenna sticking in? What's, just to, just to, there's going to be questions asked, it's close to my house, am I going to lose an ear? I mean.
Or can I borrow my eggs by putting them on my windowsill? Yeah.
You know, my answer is the same as it has been through 4G and 3G. This equipment operates on very specific spectrum, very closely regulated by the FCC. What the carriers are allowed to broadcast, and what they actually broadcast, power-wise, is a fraction of what the FCC deems safe.
Okay.
So, yeah, there, there are no credible studies out there that show there really is any danger to any of this.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now go on to item number six, which we had a, we had the same presentation for. And may have a, a, I need a motion to bring item six to the table.
Okay.
Ms. Gray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the Resolution twenty-two dash zero one zero, Conditional Use Permit Amendment to Resolution number forty-six forty-three. A hundred and thirty-foot communications tower, ten forty-five Lenzner Avenue, be approved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any, any further questions for Mr. Preckler?
One quick one.
One quick one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to have monopines. I know it could have been a palm tree or a saguaral cactus, from what I understand. Who owns that other, the other tower over by Fries on Charleston?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rodriguez, I'm not sure who owns that tower. I believe this is brought up at the P&amp;Z meeting, and if it was owned by SBA, I guess.
I don't believe it is.
It was owned by SBA Towers. I have to take a look at that, Councilmember Rodriguez, and let you know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other, any other comments, questions? Seeing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to item number seven. Dr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero eleven, Authorization to Approve a Settlement Agreement Regarding Civil Lawsuit Mary Brown versus the City of Sierra Vista, be approved.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Williams, maybe we have your staff report, please. The attorney's report, excuse me.
I was waiting for you to say, "Mr. Attorney." Mayor. Mayor, members of council, as we discussed Tuesday, this is the final step in the resolution of a lawsuit that was brought, brought by Mary Brown against the City of Sierra Vista. As you recall, in June of twenty nineteen, Ms. Brown was visiting Nancy Hakes Park, which is a small park over by Village Meadows School. And while she was crossing a wooden footbridge, she tripped and fell on a couple of raised boards on that footbridge. She incurred some injuries at that time. Ultimately, she had some surgery to address those injuries. She filed lawsuit against the city in twenty twenty, and the city's insurance carrier, insurance attorneys have been litigating that lawsuit on the city's behalf since that time. In February, end of February, the, our, our contract counsel and Ms. Brown attended a mediation where they reached a settlement that is agreeable to all parties. The city's budget appropriation would be five thousand dollars, that's our insurance deductible. And by approving this item, you're just allowing me, the city attorney's office, to finalize that settlement on behalf of the city and conclude that legal action, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions for Mr. Williams? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to item number eight. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one two, Donation of Equipment and Vehicles to Cochise College in Support of the Southeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy, be approved.
Second. It's been moved in second. Chief Thrasher, maybe we have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you all know, we are in partnership with Cochise College and the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to provide basic peace officer certification training through the Southeastern Arizona Law Enforcement Training Center. As part of that training, they have a need for law enforcement-rated vehicles to provide drivers' training, as well as high-risk stops, scenario-based training as well. So the resolution before you would be to donate four of our surplus Crown Victoria vehicles, police interceptor vehicles, three of them with sets of lights and unit roles to provide that training. These are surplus vehicles from our fleet, now that the Tahoe should be coming in this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the chief?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's great, the partnership that, that they have with, with the Cochise College and all of that, and being able to, you know, help them in any way, I think is, is great. So I'm really happy to see this.
And really, we're helping ourselves, because having the academy there allows us to maintain our forces. So we appreciate that, and appreciate your efforts in that regard as well, chief. Anybody else have any comments?
That was mine.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now, next go on to item nine. Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero one three, Amendments to the City Manager's Contract, be approved.
Second. It's been moved in seconded. Ms. Fleming, will we have the staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. So tonight before you, I have a resolution for your discussion and your consideration to amend the city manager contract by addendum. So the addendum would include three changes to the current contract. That would be, the first one would be to increase the annual salary to one hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, which would be retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-one. The second portion of the addendum would be to increase the annual salary from, rather two, one ninety-three to one eight, that would be effective July first, twenty twenty-two, the start of this fiscal year coming forward. The third portion of the addendum would be to increase the four fifty-seven deferred compensation to twenty-five thousand dollars annually, and that is on a calendar year. So that would be retro back January first to December thirty-first, to comply with the IRS regulations on deferred compensation. I will be happy to entertain any questions, comments, concerns, or anything that we have.
And just so the public knows, we did have some, a very interesting discussion, in-depth discussion in a work session recently. A, so, any other, any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none? I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We next go on to call the public. We have one young lady that wants to speak to us tonight.
Is this me?
And that is Mrs. Fredericks. Would you?
Hey, how are you?
We're doing well. And I guess Larry's can talk too? Larry Powers?
Larry's with me.
She makes me.
We're a team. I'm for, good evening. Thank you very much, mayor and city council members, for letting us present a couple of minutes of your time. I'm Pauline Fredericks, the president of St. Vincent de Paul Society of the St. Andrew Conference. This is my friend and coworker, Larry Powers. He's our food bank chair, and we're very proud to have him on our team, and he's definitely active in our community. Stan Garner is our food bank director. He can't be here this evening, but I just wanted to let you know, he's been with St. Vincent de Paul for nineteen years, and we're really proud of him. We want to sing his praises, because he does a great job shopping here in town. Larry has assisted with him. Larry has assisted with him. He watches the prices. He watches the sales. He learns to even shop on senior day to get the extra percent off. And I'll just tell you right now, you know the points you accumulate at Fries? We saved thirty-three thousand dollars last year.
Excellent.
How much did we shop? In fuel, right. It was incredible. So that was a nice little thing to say. I'm really happy to say that we didn't close one day during the pandemic. We served every single day. And we did a darn good job. We're proud of ourselves. I just wanted to let you know that on average, your community food bank provides food boxes for the homeless, single persons, to very large families. Each month, we have an average of nine hundred to twelve hundred families that visit our food bank. From January to February, we actually increased our number of families to an extra hundred. So during February, to be specific, we gave out nine hundred and thirty-eight boxes of food. We served two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine people, those of which are sixteen hundred adults and twelve hundred children. So it's quite exorbitant. The cost of groceries, as you well know, has increased, and the demand for food has increased even more. The cost of transporting the groceries from one facility to the other has greatly increased. And we have to have our trucks. They're necessary. We, there's no way what we purchase can fit in a, in a regular vehicle. The residents of Sierra Vista community have been extremely generous, and we thank everybody who has been there consistently throughout everything. And we recently want to just give kudos to Jay Matchett, who I haven't yet met. But he put together Sierra Vista Community Connect, where he has thirty organizations that have come together, and they're going to meet every first Tuesday of the month and for three hours to let everybody knows what, know what each other person does. So it's really good for interacting with each other. Let's see. There, overall, there has not been necessary funding to correspond with the grave need because everything's increasing, but the money's not coming in as fast as we would like it to. I'm hoping that the ears that are hearing us tonight and what I'm saying will respond to our call with source, resources that you may know of. We're always looking for resources, where we can get food, who is willing to work with a community food bank.
Couple of grants.
Couple of grants, right. And, and we need agencies to provide us more money to allow your food bank. Remember, it's yours. We're all in this together to feed these wonderful people and provide food for the needy. Larry, would you like to add something else?
Yeah, just, just on the side, you know, you hear about the food bank all the time. If you go to our building over there on Barto, we also have the thrift shop over on Meyer. If you go on Barto, we see on the average a hundred people a week that need help with rent, utilities, something, gas.
Gas.
Yeah, car repair.
Propane.
Hotel vouchers, you know. We see the homeless daily. I mean, daily, we're, they're there, and it's not just food. We're routinely providing shelter.
Toilet trees.
And none of that's free. We do an awful lot of it through the thrift shop. The money that's raised at the thrift shop pays that thrift shop's minimum overhead, the salary, and helps support what we do. But we, we, we have a demand in excess of eleven thousand dollars a month, just in direct support beyond food. That's a fact. I mean, you look, you look at our books, that's what we're looking at every month, month in and month out.
At a minimum.
At a minimum. We could do better than that if we had more.
Yeah.
But we have that much demand, and it's real demand, that we screen very carefully. We know the money that we get has come from donations from different people that want to help those in need. We, it's the people we service money, but we're good stewards of it, and we really try to make sure that we shepherd it and that it goes to the people most in need. But we see them on a daily basis.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you too, before you go. And I also want to say, you mentioned Community Connect, but your agency and other agencies have already been working cooperatively with, with each other. When somebody has a shortage of something, you go to talk to somebody else, and that's the teamwork that I really appreciate from all the communities, whether it's United Way, or whether it's the Salvation Army, or whether it's all the other charities that, that you're involved with. You, you really try to take care of the person or the people, the families that come in, and you don't get thanked enough. And I will, I will tell the folks out there, if you do have some extra money that you're looking to, to take off your taxes.
That's right.
We have plenty of places, and this is definitely one of them.
The time before that April fifteenth.
Contribution. And it's going to be well worthwhile. And when people will ask me, what can I do? Well, that's one of the things you can do in addition to volunteering.
Yeah.
Right? You know, always use volunteering.
Anyone's welcome to come over and look at our food bank. We'd love to give you a tour. It's, it's quite the place. So we have some great people working there.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much for, for coming and sharing that. I know that, you know, that we may be, we're aware of some of the things that, that you guys do in the community, but to have those numbers and stuff, it's, it's.
People don't realize it.
Right. It's, it's very eye-opening. So I really appreciate and thank you for, for sharing that.
Yeah, a slow day is twenty people coming to the door.
Right, yeah. So I'm hoping that more people will come and, and donate in resources and time and everything. So thank you so much for all that you do and for coming to share that with us.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll close the call to the public. Now we go to the comments and requests of council. And Mark, we're starting with you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. First of all, I want to apologize for not being there. I have to support my son. He's playing soccer tournament out of town this weekend. So wish our, wish our Sierra Vista boys good luck. I'm glad to see I passed by the airport. I saw the frame is up, you know, with some debris on the ground. So it looks like they're, they're going to do some concrete work. So it's good to see that sign coming along. Also, I waited for the hottest point this week, and I went in, I went out and sat on those metal benches on the West End, and my legs didn't burn up. So I know that's been a concern for some people about the benches, what they're made out of. And I know it's not summertime yet, but I assure you that right now, they're not hot to sit on.
Okay.
I also want to, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm, sorry, what was that?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. And then the six-month strategic plan that was put out, I really appreciate that. It really shows our city's transparency and accountability for the projects that we have going on, and really keeps the city informed, and they can check our progress. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Just for the public, our last work session, we went through the update of the, the city strategic plan, and that's what, that's what Mark is referring to. Next up is Ms. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody who came, who came out today and who shared. So if anybody has, finds a little bit of extra time or a little bit of extra resources that they have, now are, if, if you weren't before, you're now aware of places that you can help and to support. We all need each other. Sometimes you, you never know when, when you might need something or when you might be able to share something with somebody else. So kind of think about, you know, what you may have. Any, any, anything will help. So just kind of think about that and, and, and reach out and share. And if anybody loves puzzles, the, at the library, there's a puzzle exchange that's going on Friday, March the eighteenth, three thirty. So that was pretty interesting. Like, so, you know, go out there and exchange your, exchange puzzles, connect with other people. I don't know, I'm just kind of, kind of on cloud nine right now because tomorrow, I am celebrating a decade of marriage with my best friend. So, yeah, so he's probably watching. So I love you so much. Thank you. Time flies when you're with somebody that you love. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Benning?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, as always, I want to thank Father Greg for blessing us this evening. It's always great to hear from him, and I appreciate your, your family member coming in, spending his last night here with us. So thank you for coming out. I want to congratulate Jen and the rest of the budgeting team and the entire staff. Again, y'all never cease to amaze me. It was nice hearing from United Way earlier and now Saint Vincent de Paul speaking to us also about what they've done this year, how they're helping people, et cetera. I always say, it breaks my heart that we have to help that many people, but then it warms my heart that we can't. So I, I like to challenge everyone in the room and in the thousands watching over YouTube. Volunteer one day. Give us an hour. Give a, you, give a company an hour, give a church an hour, give somebody an hour. Just go out there and, and, and make your community better for one hour and see how that catches on and how that changes. So it, it's just great to see. I just wish we could do more. And I wasn't going to say this. Now I'll say happy ver, happy anniversary, and because he is watching. I'll tell Keith, I don't know how he landed you, but.
He did really good. Married up.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benning. Ms. Humphrey? Thank you, Mrs. Humphrey. Mayor Protem Gray?
No, sir, I think I've said enough tonight.
And I've only got really one item. I sent out an email to, to the council today. The league is, is getting ready to do their policy statements for the legislature will be the next initiatives for the next year. And those policy committees start meeting now before the, before the league meeting, where we, where we go through and approve on what areas we're going to try to address for the legislature. So if there are council members that are interested in, interested in doing this, I know the Mayor Protem has done this before. So a few other councilmen, if there's an area of interest that you would like to pursue, you can come talk to me or the Mayor Protem, and if, and we can kind of give you the lowdown on, on what needs to happen. But basically, you get nominated by the city to represent us on one of the four, four policy committees, and you work on a issue or several issues. So, and again, nowadays, you don't have to drive up to Phoenix for all the meetings. You can do it on, you can do it over the computer. So it makes it nice. So let me know. And I see nothing else before the council? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.